I would like to call this regular meeting of the Corleville City Council to order. It is May 27, 2025. Could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Knudsen?
Here.
Vogelzang?
Here.
Quinn?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Goodrich?
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, the city attorney, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Goodrich.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Okay. On to our next item, which is a proclamation. This one is for National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, 125 people in the United States are killed by gun violence, and more than 260 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 19,000 gun-related homicides every year, and Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun violence than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Iowa has an average 343 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 10.7 deaths per 100,000 people, a crisis that costs the state $4.2 billion each year, of which 53 million is paid by taxpayers, Iowa has the 42nd highest rate of gun deaths in the United States. And whereas gun homicides and assaults are concentrated in cities, with more than half of all gun homicides in the nation occurring in 42 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including Corleville, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions and protecting public safety in the communities they serve, is the mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support of the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from those who are a danger to themselves and others, and gun violence prevention is more important than ever, as we see gun violence continue to impact communities across the country. And whereas mayors, council members, and law enforcement officers, in partnership with local violence intervention activists and resources, know their communities best, are most familiar with local criminal activity, and know how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas in January 2013, Hadia Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15, and on June 6, 2025, to recognize her 28th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadia and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those victims. And whereas Hadia's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange, which was chosen because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible ownership to help keep our families and communities safe. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the City of Corleville, proclaim June 6, 2025, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Corleville. Further, I encourage all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Signed and sealed on this 27th day of May, 2025, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay. Now I do believe we have some folks here to receive this proclamation. Would you like to step up to the microphone and say a few words, please?
Hello? I'm just going to keep it quite brief. I just want to thank you, Mayor, and the city council members for making this proclamation. It's a very important issue here in Corleville and our other cities here in Iowa, to not have any more children die by senseless gun violence. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else from your group that would like to say a few words?
I'll also keep it brief. I'm Jess Lang. I'm with Johnson County Community Violence Intervention at the county attorney's office. I just want to thank you again for your support and continued support. We work closely with the Corleville Police Department, and they've been phenomenal with the partnership that we have and keeping collaboration going with the work that we do. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay. Would you like to come up and have a photo? All right. Right up here.
Can I do that one? Oh, I didn't take one with that. I just was getting it ready for you. You're the professional.
All right. Thank you both. There we go. All right. Thank you. Thank you for all your consideration. All right. Okay. Next item on the agenda is community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. Each speaker will have five minutes, and we do reserve the right to adjust both the individual speaking time and the overall comment time based on the number of speakers or any accommodations that a speaker might need. So is there anyone that would like to address us tonight for public comment? All right. Hop up to the mic. Introduce yourself. Tell us what's on your mind.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Mackenzie Daru. I'm with Greater Iowa City, Inc., and I am here this evening to share Greater Iowa City's support for a local option sales tax, or LOST, and request that the City of Corleville consider putting it on the ballot. LOST is an additional 1-cent sales tax on applicable goods and services, and currently Corleville, Iowa City, and North Liberty are all in the extreme minority of cities in Iowa by not collecting this revenue. We see LOST as additive to current budgets and allows cities to diversify their revenue sources and be less reliant on property taxes, which seems particularly relevant given current discussions happening in Des Moines about property taxes. Local option sales tax also captures revenue from our large visitor population and tourism economy. So when visitors eat out after a Hawkeye football game, shop at Coral Ridge Mall, go to downtown Iowa City to see a show, or visit North Liberty's maybe two new hospitals for health care, they currently are not paying this tax in our community when our visitors, should we go to their communities, are. We see LOST as a local option to provide local solutions to some of our community's most pressing challenges. We first started exploring LOST with all three municipalities back in December, and we engaged with the Greater IC Executive Council and other business leaders about how this new revenue could support important issues. And we also met individually with councilors from North Liberty and Iowa City and are here speaking with you all tonight. As I said, our organization thinks that LOST is a great idea, and we're encouraging cities to pursue it. Beyond that, we see real potential in each city, Corleville, Iowa City, and North Liberty, in setting aside 20% of this new revenue to address the housing challenges in our communities. Our business communities see the need for further investment in housing locally. We've received this in survey feedback. We hear it at council meetings with businesses, including a recent task force we created of Corleville-based businesses that also expressed the need for further investment in housing. Moreover, investing in housing can offset some of the concerns about the regressivity of a local option sales tax. And finally, all the cities prioritizing housing together allows for a regional message on a campaign, as well as significant funding to pursue new creative solutions in addition to additional support to our housing nonprofits. We realize each city has its own priorities and strategic plans, and we are supportive of a local option sales tax, even if funds are used for other projects. But we are really excited about the possibility of a campaign for LOST this fall across all three cities with support for housing programs. And I'd welcome the opportunity to meet with any of you individually to discuss further. Thank you for your time.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us or address us? Okay. We will move on to our next agenda item. So our next agenda item is a public hearing for an FY 2025 budget amendment. And this is to amend the fiscal year 2025 budget for different revenues and expenditures. And the amendment needs to be filed with the state by May 31, 2025. So hopefully we can get this done tonight. Okay. So I will open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone that would like to speak to us about this at the microphone? Okay. We do have our Finance Director, Ann Hester, here to share some information with us.
Thank you, Mayor. Fiscal year 2025 budget amendment includes expenses resulting from capital project activity, the use of reserves, timing differences, and account groupings across fiscal years, and the cost of providing services in a growing community. We had a number of capital projects, all of them in different stages of completion and progress billing. So that's what right now is on the screen. We also had refinancing of the hotel remodel. That in itself was over $20 million. We had use of reserves for various items. Some examples include police surgeon to attend polygraph school, carpet replacement at the library, outdoor pool repairs and indoor pool repairs, emergency repair of library sewer lift station and sewer pipe, a re-establishment of the city fiber network near the First Avenue and Highway 80, and upgrade to the city's door lock system. This is just to name a few items. We had some timing differences. Example includes CCPA rights deposits for next season for fiscal year 26, and those deposits are higher than expected. And we anticipate expenses in fiscal year 26 will be less. As well as other items, additional wages for facility supervisor at Van Allen and Wickham due to extra hours required to support increased gym rentals. We had some variances across line items due to updated account groupings, and these account groupings were reviewed and developed in working together with the city external auditors, Borgan, KTV.
All right. Thank you for that overview. Does anyone have any questions for Ann? Comments?
Seems like these changes kind of cut both ways, many of them less, some of them more. Do you have a summary of what impact it has on this year's budget?
Yeah, so let's see.
In terms of red-black, I guess?
So this would be the summary. So we had amended revenues were increased by $35 million. A lot of the, like, more than $20 million of that is related to the hotel refinancing that's listed under other financing sources. We also had some other proceeds from revenue bonds for Westland used central trunk sewer face, as well as copilot projects.
So we didn't budget for that hotel renovation going into last year or this year?
We didn't budget for refinancing the renovation. We refinanced the loan.
Okay.
And the total amendments to the expenses were about $48 million. Also, more than $20 million of that is related to the hotel refinancing. It's listed under business enterprises.
So with that $20 million in revenue, we paid off a lot of debt. That was, we were getting at a higher rate, I guess, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
The loan that we refinanced, the rate for that loan, due to that it was a construction loan, it was over 9%. So it was definitely advantageous to refinance it, and that rate was, if my memory is correct, a little over 5%.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ann? All right. Thank you. Well, I will close the public hearing then, and we will consider, though I forgot to ask, do we have any written comments? All right. Okay. Then we will now consider the resolution.
Resolution approving amendment to the fiscal year 2025 budget. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please? Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have a public hearing for the Fifth Street Villas. This is a change in land use, and this will allow the Fifth Street parcel to be redeveloped into 20 townhome units. And we have our Community Development Director, Dave Johnson, here to provide an overview on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. This area is currently designated as public and semi-public and low-density residential on the land use map. There's a former childcare center and single-family home that are on this property, and this minimum will allow up to 20 townhome units. The average density will be 12 dwelling units per acre, and medium-density residential allows for horizontally stacked townhomes, and that would be with a density of 6 to 16 dwelling units per acre. So immediately east and north of this property are apartment buildings, and across the street are townhomes of similar density as well as design. The concept for this development is to actually mirror to a great degree the development immediately south. This is along the Fifth Street corridor. It's a more urban corridor, can support this. And medium-density residential can be considered consistent with and complementary to the character of development in the surrounding area. That's all I have.
Excellent. And how about the Planning and Zoning Commission report?
The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this at their May 7 meeting, and by a vote of four to zero, the commission recommended to approve the proposed land use plan map amendment from public semi-public and low-density residential to medium-density residential.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll now open the public hearing on this. Is there anyone that would like to address us on this item? Do we have any written comments? Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the ordinance.
Ordinance number 2025-1007, an ordinance amending the Corleville Community Plan to reflect certain property generally known as the Fifth Street Villas, Johnson County, Iowa, to be designated in medium-density residential use in place of public and semi-public use and low-density residential use. This ordinance introduced, first consideration by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or discussion?
Just a little comment. That building was one of the older buildings in Corleville that we looked at and highlighted when we had the Sesquicentennial. And just a little history, it was a church, one of the first churches in Corleville, and it was started in 1948, and they used volunteers and business donations and so on, and they had their open house and dedication in '53. So it took them about four or five years to build that.
Definitely is very unique architecture.
Maybe lots of different ideas, lots of people involved in it there.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Do we have any other questions or comments on this? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please? Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Next item, we have Ridge View Part III. We have some final plats, including lots 28 and 29. And I think you're just going to have to get real comfortable there, Dave.
Yes. Actually, there's quite a bit tonight for Ridge View Part III. This is the final plat. This will plot lots 28 and 29. This is a continuation of the existing 32-unit apartment buildings on the south side of Spring Rose Circle. You're seeing three or four of them that have already been built. There's one under construction right now. And this is just really a continuation of that. So staff has reviewed that plat and finds that it conforms with the requirements for preparation and filing. And I would add that the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their May 7 meeting, and by a vote of four to zero, the commission recommended to approve the final plat for Ridge View Part III.
Excellent. Thank you for that overview. Okay. All right. Could I have the resolution now, please?
Resolution approving the final plat of Ridge View Part III, Corleville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay. Roll call. Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Ordinance passes its first consideration, all ayes. Next item, we have Ridge View Part III. We have some final plats, including lots 28 and 29. And I think you're just going to have to get real comfortable there, Dave.
Yes. Actually, there's quite a bit tonight for Ridge View Part III. This is the final plat. This will plot lots 28 and 29. This is a continuation of the existing 32-unit apartment buildings on the south side of Spring Rose Circle. You're seeing three or four of them that have already been built. There's one under construction right now. And this is just really a continuation of that. So staff has reviewed that plat and finds that it conforms with the requirements for preparation and filing. And I would add that the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their May 7 meeting, and by a vote of four to zero, the commission recommended to approve the final plat for Ridge View Part III.
Excellent. Thank you for that overview. Okay. All right. Could I have the resolution now, please?
Resolution approving the final plat of Ridge View Part III, Corleville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions? Any discussion? Okay. Roll call. Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And our next agenda item is the public hearing for Lot 28. And this would be for a 36-unit multifamily residential building south of Spring Rose Circle. All right.
Thank you. And correction, you're right. I did say 32-unit in the previous agenda item. It is a 36-unit multifamily residential building. This lot is 1.37 acres, and this development is consistent with the Ridge View PUDA Master Development Plan, and the building design and materials are also consistent with the approved master building designs and design guidelines in the Westland Use Area Master Plan. Again, Lot 28 will be a continuation of the multifamily development along the south side of Spring Rose Circle. There will be an average density of 26 dwelling units per acre. This is a little bit higher than the Corleville Community Plan land use designation of medium-density residential. However, it is consistent with the overall density and layout for that master plan for the area. This development requires a total of 81 parking spaces. 70 parking spaces are being provided. Again, parking is calculated more on the master plan level, so that is really of no concern, and that flexibility of parking is achieved through the overall parking availability in the plan. Staffs reviewed the site plan, landscape plan, as well as associated materials, and find the project conforms with the Westland Use Area Master Plan as well as the Ridge View PUDA Master Development Plan. And the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their May 7 meeting, and by a vote of four to zero, the commission recommended to approve the PUDB site plan for Ridge View Part III, Lot 28.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay. I'll open the public hearing on this item. Would anyone like to speak to us about this? And do we have any written comments?
No.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 28, Ridge View Part III, Corleville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Knudsen. Any comments on this? Any questions?
Do we know if there's any affordable housing unit that'd be in work into these?
I am not aware of what the lease rates will be for these buildings. I'm not sure.
Is there something that we can talk with the developer since housing crisis is?
We can, but at this time, we don't really have any tools to mandate any sort of affordability component, but it's certainly something we can discuss with the developer and find out.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll throw off the comment. I think we commented the other day, there's a bike trail right behind all these places as these buildings go up, apparently with unlimited demand. They must keep filling them. It's fantastic. You know, if we could connect up to the, what would be by the Aldi's, it would allow all these folks moving in there to be able to walk to that Walgreens and Aldi's if there is ever a way. I think you mentioned that maybe we could look at it. I have no idea if it's feasible or not, but it would be a nice little access to that trail that they have, which is otherwise kind of a road to nowhere.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to talk to the developer since you brought that up, but my recollection was, Scott, that he had offered us that land if we were interested in it. Yeah. There's some gray issues to the south that we have to look at.
Yeah, there's kind of a gravel road that goes up. I don't know how you would connect it to the trail system, but I think I biked down it once years ago. Yeah, yeah.
I would note that we are anticipating an amendment to the master development plan for some of the future phases. That would be a really good opportunity to address that at that time.
Any other questions or comments about this item? Okay. Roll call, please. Goodrich?
Aye.
Knudsen?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have a public hearing for Lot 29, and this is for, is this 36 units as well?
Correct. Identical building, slightly larger lot, or slightly larger lot. This is 1.59 acres. This is also consistent with the Ridge View Master Plan, as well as the materials in the Westland Use Area. And this has an average density of 22 dwelling units per acre. This development requires 81 parking spaces. 86 parking spaces are provided through the surface parking. And staff has reviewed the site plan, landscape plan, and associated materials, and find this conforms with the master development plan, as well as the Westland Use Area Master Plan. And the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended four to zero at their May 7 meeting to approve the PUDB site plan for Ridge View Part III, Lot 29.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'm going to open the public hearing on this item. Would anybody like to talk to us about Lot 29? Do we have any written comments?
No.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the PUDB site plan for Lot 29, Ridge View Part III, Corleville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knudsen, seconded by.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vogelzang. Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
These all have underground parking, too, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Anything else? Okay. Could I have the roll call, please? Knudsen?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, SJS Golf View Estates. This is a four-lot residential development off of First Avenue, near East Grant View Drive. And Dave, you're up again.
So this subdivision is 44.4 acres and four lots. Lot number four is 21 acres and will contain the existing home accessory structures, as well as the pond that is currently addressed at 2250 First Avenue. Three additional approximate three-acre lots will be created. The existing driveway in connection to First Avenue will be abandoned, and McCurry Lane, which will be a private street and cul-de-sac, will be constructed between East Grant View And McCurry Lane, which will be a private street and cul-de-sac, will be constructed between East Grant View Drives where the site distances are best. City staff has reviewed the plat and finds that it conforms with the requirements for preparation filing. And the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their May seventh meeting, and by a vote of four to zero, the commission recommended to approve the preliminary plat for SJS Golf View Estates subdivision.
Awesome, thank you. Okay. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving the preliminary plat of SJS Golf View Estates, Corville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions on this item?
Are they gonna try to connect to the golf course, or no?
No, there will not be a connection to the golf course.
You wanna look for golf balls there?
If I, if I had enough. If I could live there, you might want to have access to the, to the trail, so you could have a cart and zip up there.
They are, they are gonna maintain their existing driveway as a path, but it will not be connected to First Avenue. That will be disconnected.
Yeah, then you can't really get to the golf course very easily.
Any other questions?
Not legally.
Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, third reading for the Gregory Ridge subdivision. And this proposal is for a two-lot subdivision in a single-family residential district. All right, could I have the ordinance read, please?
Resolution, or ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash one thousand six. An ordinance amending the Corville zoning ordinance to same being ordinance number twenty twenty dash one thousand nine, as previously amended, rezoning certain property located within the corporate limits of the city of Corville, Johnson County, Iowa, and generally known as Gregory Ridge subdivision from R four multifamily residential district, and R two two-family residential district, to R one single-family residential district. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any final thoughts on this one? All right, roll call, please.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. And could I have the first resolution, please?
Resolution approving the preliminary plat for Gregory Ridge, Corville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Questions or thoughts? Okay, roll call.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And the last resolution.
Resolution approving the final plat of Gregory Ridge, Corville, Iowa. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions, comments on this item? Okay, roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, let's see, I wanna make sure, we have a big agenda, I wanna make sure I'm on the right item. Okay, yes, fourteen. All right, next item, general obligation loan agreements. This is to finance various infrastructure costs and other improvements. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement awarding the sale, providing for the issuance of general obligation bond series twenty twenty-five A, and providing for levy of taxes to pay the same. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Questions or discussion? Okay, roll call.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have amendment to gas and electric franchise agreements. And this would be to increase the franchise fees on gas and electrical facilities sold by Mid-American Energy and Lynn County R E C. And that would go up from one percent to two percent. Could I have the first ordinance, please?
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash one thousand three, granting to Mid-American Energy Company its successors and assigns the right in non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain, and operate in the city of Corville, an electric system and communication facilities, and to furnish and sell electric energy to the city and its inhabitants, and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of twenty years. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. And the next ordinance, please.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-four dash one thousand four, granting to Mid-American Energy Company and its successors and assigns the right in non-exclusive franchise to acquire, construct, erect, maintain, and operate in the city of Corville, a natural gas system, and to furnish and sell natural gas to the city and its inhabitants, and authorizing the city to collect franchise fees for a period of twenty years. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any discussion or any question? Okay, roll call, please.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. And the last ordinance, please.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash one thousand five, an ordinance amending section one eleven B point seventeen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Corville, increasing the franchise fee for sale of electricity by Lynn County Rural Electric Cooperative to two percent. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any questions?
Could you remind us when will this chain take effect again?
The, they're, July first.
Of this year?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great question. Anything else? All right, roll call, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its third and final consideration, all ayes. Next item, Westland Use Trunk, Central Trunk Sewer Phase One. And this would be for the completion of a trunk sewer from the Clear Creek Amana Community School District, their new elementary school site, to the northwest corner of Highway Six and Lucas Avenue. All right, so for the first one, I would entertain a motion approving a pay estimate thirteen to Maxwell Construction for the Westland Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase One.
So moved.
Moved by Quinn.
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Voice vote, okay. Could I, so, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that motion is approved. And now the resolution.
Resilient, accepting the Westland Use Central Trunk Sewer Phase One project as completed. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have the Corleville Youth Sports Park Project, Phase Three. So we had some bids that came in higher than the engineer's estimate. And so it's recommended that we need to look at these bids again, and maybe do some more work with the consultant on some alternate plans. And we have Parks and Rec Director Sherry Proud here to talk a little bit more about this situation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We took bids on Thursday, May fifteenth, and opened from three contractors. They arranged on the high side at two million nineteen thousand two hundred dollars and forty-nine cents, to the low bid of one million eight hundred and eighty-five thousand three hundred and forty dollars and fifty cents. Our project estimate by our consultants is, was one million five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. So we were almost four hundred thousand dollars over in costs. Most of those were in the completion of the fields themselves, outside of the civil work. And so we are recommending that we would reject these bids and go back to our consultants and talk about how we can change up either the structure of this bid, and/or the timing of this bid, so we can get some better pricing. This, one of these diamonds is to move the baseball diamond from S T Morrison Park to the youth sports park, so that it would be out of the way of, of construction of a new recreation center. So we do have a little bit of time and aren't under a rush. We were under the impression, from talking with contractors, that they didn't feel there was enough work out there. But from these bids, we are finding that they probably did have enough work, and we can do a better job.
Excellent, thanks for that overview. All right, could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution rejecting bids for the Corville Youth Sports Park Project, Phase Three. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any questions for Sherry, or discussion on this item?
I would guess this would delay it by about a year, or longer, do you think?
If we go, if we go back to the bid table with two separate packages, and do one here yet this summer, and turn the diamonds over for the build-out in the spring, and we seed next September, it's a delay by a year, but we'll be working almost half of that year. And we're giving our contractors a lot more time than we did in this first bid package.
Yeah, I was just curious, I mean, do we leave any leeway of, like, overestimated bid or cost when we take bids? You know, is there a little window, a cushion, I would say, for bids to be a little higher than what we expect them to be?
Oh, definitely in the planning part of it, in taking into the account the current culture. But as well as just leaving ourselves a little bit of a cushion. We had, we had a little bit of cushion in this, but it's just way, way beyond the cushion we had.
This was not a little bit.
This was, this was a lot.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
This is my first in twenty years recommendation of rejecting bids, so. It was a big memo for me to write.
I've never, never seen, now I had to look at it, like, oh, rejecting the bids, yeah.
I would just say that, you know, that fifth field, or the smaller field that's in this, that was in this plan, was kind of a bonus. You know, the main, the priority is to get the baseball field moved. And I'm sure if we had removed that field, it would fall within budget. So I hope it doesn't come to that, but, but that might be something that I wouldn't oppose, considering if we had to.
Okay, anything else?
I would also ask, when you talk to the consultants, are you looking at using different types of material that may lower the cost in the field?
We'll value, we'll do some value engineering when we get back into that and look at. But we really looked at that when we were putting things together, like a full backstop, chain link fence to the ground, or, or the new style of you build a short knee wall and you go with netting. About the same cost, surprisingly. So you know, we were constantly looking at those kinds of choices. I think it will probably be in some concrete. There was, there was a lot of trail and, and plaza space and things that probably need to come out. And there was also some luxury items, like we get beat around when we sit lawn chairs constantly around the outside of, of the field, infield, that grass never looks good. And so we had that in as an artificial turf. Probably gonna have to just go back to grass and figure out a way to, to put down more seed and grow grass better.
I'm curious if there was any discussion of tariffs, potential tariffs or current tariffs affecting some of the materials that may have been involved in that, you know, like you mentioned fencing. If that's coming from Canada, now it's ten percent more, that type of thing. Was that mentioned at all by any of the?
A little, a little bit.
A little bit?
Yeah.
So the effects of tariffs could be doing this project. Just wanted to make that clear to everybody.
Anything else? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. All right, next item, Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank Fill Dirt Agreement. This agreement sells excessive fill dirt removed from the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank construction area that is currently being stored on leased land to the city of Tiffin. Could I have that resolution read, please?
Resolution approving an agreement for the sale of fill dirt with the city of Tiffin. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. All right, would you like to give a little information?
Good description there. We, from the Clear Creek Stream Mitigation Bank, we took out about two hundred thousand cubic yards of dirt from all along the bank in, in that area of, about where I eighty, three eighty comes together and goes down a little bit further to the southwest around the Creekside Ballpark area is where we were working. That's currently stored on some property that we had to lease to be able to store that dirt. And so now we're in the process of trying to sell that dirt and get it hauled away, so we can end that lease.
Any questions for Sherry?
Is Tiffin gonna use it for a roundabout?
They are going to use it for their pad for their new recreation center. And at their, I believe they have a water plant addition, or some work going on for a water plant.
All right. Any other questions about this dirt? All right, roll call, please.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Okey-dokey. Next item, amendment number two to the Utility Resilience Brick Subaward Agreement. This amendment will allow the Iowa Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to continue providing advanced assistance with the exploration and development of the utility resilience project until July eleventh, twenty twenty-six. And this changes the scope of work to allow for borings on the Crandic Railroad for no additional cost. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving amendment number two to that certain subaward agreement with the Iowa Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management for the utility resilience project. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded, sorry, seconded by?
Peterson.
Peterson. Any questions or comments about this? Actually, so we had gotten an update that is that, what's that? No, I'm, we're on the, yeah, we're on this one still, right? Okay, yeah. So we had gotten the update that that potentially was not going to happen, so.
That's the.
Different.
Yeah, there's two different projects.
Gotcha, okay.
One is the planning grant, which got, got, did all the planning for the second grant, which was for undergrounding the utilities. So this is the planning grant, which we didn't use very much of to begin with. And so this will allow us to do expiration work on the Crandic to see whether we can certify that as a levy on that particular piece. So we still have, and we've verified, the state has verified, we do have that funds. We actually haven't officially received the notice on the second grant yet, so we're still waiting to hear on that. I would just comment that Ellen had invited me to participate last Friday in a call with the state, and then their consultants that they use to help them write grants. And Scott Larson, our city engineer, also participated in that. And they were going through this process with us. And the consultants, which are located from around the country that they use, were surprised that our community had so much information and had done so much work with flood resiliency. And they were extremely surprised and were very happy to help us continue to move forward because of all the efforts. And Scott was able to show them amazing amount of detail on our G I S system that outlines all of this. And so they're already looking at a couple of other possible grants to help us with some last pieces of the flood protection that could help us certify all of those areas. And the significance of certifying them is that then those businesses and residential areas in those zones would no longer need flood insurance, which can be very, very expensive. So, so anyway, I just point that out to you. I was, it was very interesting to hear their comments and how pleased they were and how excited they were to help us because of the work that had already been done.
Awesome.
That's great.
That's great.
Yeah. Excellent. Do we have any other questions or comments about this? Okay, roll call, please.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Okay, this next agenda item, I'm gonna consult with the city clerk. Did we, did we have a change on here?
We were informed last minute that the I R L Parkview Investments is withdrawn there. We were informed last minute that the IRL Parkview Investments is withdrawing their workforce housing tax credit application for now, so we do not need that resolution.
Okay. All right, thank you for that, but we do have a second one on here. So, so we're scratching the first resolution and we will consider the second resolution. This is also for a workhouse, workforce tax credit, but this one would be for Gather Iowa, and this is for the development that is south of Second Street and Highway, which is Highway Six and west of First Avenue. So, can I have that resolution, please?
Resolution of support for the application of RDC-FDC Iowa Investments LLC for funding via the Workforce Housing Tax Credit Program and pledging city monies for the same. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions?
Can you remind us what you need to do to qualify for this? I kind of forget. I thought at first this was affordable housing. This has nothing to do with that.
This is for the bigger building, so the, the one that is designated as affordable is farther back. This is a bigger building. It's 293 units. For the workforce housing tax credits, you have to show that each unit was built for less than $230,000, so they're working on that right now. The applications due June 10th, and then the city has to provide support of $1,000 per unit, but we can do that through our existing agreement with Gather Iowa.
So, 230K is the current price that you have to build it. Is there any size? Can you, how small can it be for that? Two bedroom or one or?
Uh, these are up to three bedrooms. There's a few three bedroom. There's eight three bedroom units, 100 two bedroom units, and 185 one bedroom units.
You could make it any size for the grant.
So, this is basically for the one bedroom units, probably, if there's 100.
No, it's for all of them.
But there's only 185 units here.
Well, the note isn't quite correct. It's actually 293.
Oh.
Okay.
So, it's the full.
The whole building?
Big building that has the parking structure attached.
Okay, yeah.
And then that'll be separated, and then next year, they will be moving forward with the Affordable Housing Project, and they would have a separate application for that.
Right. Yeah, when I saw this in your memo, I thought they were related, but they're not.
Well, it was related in that I said that just so you were aware that they are separating them on purpose so that they can have two opportunities to receive the funds.
Okay.
There's a maximum of a million dollars that you can receive per project, and so if you combine them, you can't get a million, you're, you're only gonna get a million dollars. Now, for the first one, they can easily get to a million dollars just with that one building. The second one, I don't know if that'll, I don't think that'll probably get them to a million dollars, but they'll definitely get additional money if they are selected.
And is that only in certain parts of the state where, where there's considered housing shortages, or?
No, it's statewide, and they're, of the allocation they have, they commit 50% to rural areas and 50% to urban, or considered urban.
And these, there is like a, uh, uh, because this is in an area that has some blight, that also makes the application a little bit more attractive, correct?
Um, it doesn't explicitly receive points, but it definitely helps in the narrative and the storytelling, yeah.
And they can also apply for brownfields tax credits because of where it's being built.
And so, there's no issue with it being in a, because I know we have some flood planning issues there.
They got a conditional letter of map revision, CLOMER, which means that the, that FEMA's reviewed their plans and that as long as they build it according to the plans, it will be out of the flood plain, so that's considered okay. Without that, they cannot apply.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Is there a formular that they use to configure, you know, how many one bedroom unit, two bedroom unit, three bedroom unit in that 293 unit total?
I think it's just what they think the market, you know, between the market and the design of the building and what they think is, you know, really needed, or will lease best.
Yeah, the reason I ask is, excuse me, because I hear a lot of family that is looking for three bedroom housing, and so looking at this number, there's only eight unit of the three bedroom, and there's 185 one bedroom, so I don't know if we are targeting student or not, because it's.
They are not targeting students in this project. They specifically are looking for community young professionals, any other, they do not anticipate, there probably will be some students there, but that's not their target for this.
Any other questions?
I guess, I'm sorry, I have one more. I guess what, what would it look like if, if we bring the negotiation back on the table and asking for more two or three bedroom units?
Well, we've already approved their plan formally, so I don't know that we would really have any leverage to ask them to change that, because their numbers are consistent with their plan that we already approved as part of their zoning amendment.
So, we're committing 300K potentially if they receive this award.
Right.
Chances of them receiving it would be in what area, ballpark? 50/50, 90 to 10?
They, about 50% of the applications they receive get funded.
Okay.
I hope this one has a better than 50% chance. I just, I don't know.
They, is it this year, this year's awards, they raised an additional 10 million?
Uh, I think it's 4 million next year and 4 million the year after, so it's eight total.
So, it might go up from 50%.
And that's split 50/50 too, so, yeah.
And when would we budget this 300,000?
Next year.
It would be.
Well, actually, it wouldn't be next year, it'd be.
It's gonna be, they'd have to, it has to be totally constructed, so it's not gonna, probably gonna be too much.
It's like three or four years down the road, probably.
Because you gotta move the line, remember, that's gonna take some time, too. And build, I mean, if you remember how long it took banks or latitude to get built, it's, you know, similar scope.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And it, it isn't a new commitment. It is part of our existing agreement with them, so it's not an additional $300,000. We can use the existing agreement, so it's not an additional 293,000.
So, if they don't get it, does that mean we have 300,000 extra?
You're always thinking.
It's an obvious question.
Not quite, no.
Probably not, is what I'm guessing.
Uh, the only other comment that I would make is that I do hope that, you know, with the affordable units that we can, you know, I know they're talking about applying for these credits for that, and I just hope that we can really stay true to our vision for that building, that it is truly affordable for families and, and for folks that might be a little on the lower end of the AMI spectrum. So, I just wanna get that comment in there while we are talking about buildings and units and credits and things like that. Okay, do we have any other comments on this? Okay, roll call, please. Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, we have the Corleville Drug-Free Workplace and Drug and Alcohol Policy Updates. So, this resolution will update the city's drug-free workplace policy, and I believe this is just, this is for certain employees that do certain types of jobs, and we are adding verbiage that an employee, if, if an employee is convicted of a criminal drug statute violation, they must notify their supervisor or the HR risk manager in writing, and there's also some updates to other wording within the drug and alcohol policy. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving the revised Chapter 28 Drug-Free Workplace Policy in the City of Corleville Personnel Manual and the City of Corleville's Drug and Alcohol Policy. This resolution introduced for adoption by council member Goodrich, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or comments? All right, roll call, please. Peterson?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And finally, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
But I may, I would like to ask council to consider motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to X.
Or, actually, if we go to Y, I think.
Oh, we go to Y.
Yeah. Oh, we have two different ones, so it is S. Okay, mine has Y.
Okay.
All right, regardless, regardless. All right, moved by Quinn, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Could I have the roll call, please? Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. All right, city administrators report.
Um, yes, just a couple items, Mayor. First of all, there was a great Memorial Day service yesterday, and I just wanted to report when I was out with a group putting up the flags in the cemetery on Saturday morning, I had two different families stop and just thank our Parks Department for how well the cemetery was, is kept up and how beautiful they thought it was as they were there to honor their families, and so I just wanted to pass that on to you and our thanks to the Parks Department for that work there. Just a reminder, on June 9th, 12th Avenue will be closing in two spots north of Liberty Lane, and that will take how long, Scott?
Scheduled till July 3rd, but we're hoping it's shorter.
So, just be aware when you're coming that direction that you will have to detour. So, that's all, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor's report, I don't have a whole lot. Just wanted to start out by saying congratulations to council member Quinn on another successful Asian Fest. It was amazing, really, event has really grown. It was a lot of fun and just wonderful celebration in Morrison Park. Also, wanted to note that tomorrow night is the summer reading program kickoff at the library. I believe that starts at 5:00, and that goes until 6:30 PM. Lots of programming opportunities for people of all ages, so make sure that you go and check that out. And I did just want to note as well that we're coming at the end of May, so we're, we're, we will be moving into June, which is Pride Month, and we do have some events planned, some activities planned, so make sure that you are keeping an eye on the, the city's website for lots of new and fun things that we're going to be doing for, to celebrate pride in Corleville. I think it's really important, especially this year. Okay, that's all I have. City attorneys report?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Okay, committee and council members report. Let's start down at this end with Lori.
I want to congratulate Royce on his speech at the Memorial Day Service. It was very well done, thank you. And congratulations to all the families, both high school and college, who have graduates this year. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Royce?
Thank you, Lori. I, I got to do two yesterday, my first two public speaking things as a Corv, or a city council member, geez, I can't even talk tonight. I'm glad I did better yesterday. But yeah, no, that was, it was nice to see that many people out in the community. We started in Tiffin and then went to Corleville, and then I wanted to also commend you on your, your work at the Asian Fest, even with the quick, quick action fix on the firecrackers. That was amazing. But yeah, no, that was my first time attending that, and I thought it was really, really cool, and pine on doing it again and again and again, so, thank you. And, and like I said, what a great community we live in, right? So, all these events that, that we've had in the last few weeks and, and more to come, and can't wait. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, what do you have for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for, you know, the acknowledgement of a successful celebration in our community. It was a lot of work, but it's very, very worth it. It's worth all the non-hour of sleep and, you know, stress and begging people. But it was, it was a beautiful day, and we have a better venue. It's worked out so much better. There was a lot more space for folk to sit, and it just seemed a lot cooler on the grass than on the concrete. So, we are really hoping that we can continue to return back to that same venue year after year. Sometime, you know, things come up and we thought, oh, man, this sucks, but then, you know, that challenge really opened a door for us to discover new things, and so this was one of it. Yeah, and thank you to my colleague here, Madam Mayor, for her speech, and Council Goodrich and Council Peterson. Council Goodrich was out there early in the morning, setting up tents and, you know, live traskan, so I really, really appreciate your help. And a huge thank you to the Park and Rec staff. They was out there early on Sa, on Friday morning, setting up the stage, and then they was also out there early on Sunday morning, tearing down the stage. Without their support, there's no way that we could have a successful festival. And thank you to the fire department, specifically Chief Ori, for making sure that our firecracker is up to code and safe, and, you know, we follow all the rules and everything. It was 8,000 firecracker and two strings, so it, it's go for two minutes. It was really, it was, it was really cool. Yeah, but in general, really, thank you to the entire community. Thank you to every single person that have a hand in helping us make that tradition a successful, and hopefully we'll have that for many years to come. And speaking of which, June is upon us. That means summer is around the corner, so with summer, kid will not go to school. That mean that some kid will not get to eat. So, the, the food pantry is partnering with the school district and a lot of local restaurant and community and businesses to host summer lunch program. We are hosting 11 weeks this summer. It's begin on June 10th, so school get out on June 6th, so the next Tuesday is when we start summer lunch program, and it's go all the way until August 20th. So, 11 week of summer, we encourage anyone, it doesn't have to be, you know, kids who don't get to eat, but really, we encourage anyone to bring your kid, bring your family, come eat with us, hang out with us. We have a lot of different activity, and you can go on the website and take a peek at our menu and to see what is serving each day and what kind of activity we provide each day, but there's, there's a lot of fun thing there, so check it out. And I think that's all I have.
Okay, excellent, thank you. All right. Rich, what do you have for us tonight?
Um, I'll just kind of reiterate, but I'm, was, you know, proud to, to see Corleville's involvement with celebrating and honoring Memorial Day. I think it's, in my opinion, it's the most important holiday in our country, most expensive in a lot of ways, so it's always good to see the participation and the honoring of those that went before us. This weekend, Sherry, I think the Aquatic Center opens on Saturday. The Aquatic Center opens Saturday at noon, and people can get their swim passes at the, at the rec center, correct?
Yes, thank you. Swim passes can be picked up at, if you're gonna do, do a three-month pass for the whole summer, you'll want to come to the rec center. They'll take your picture, make your pass. If you want to get a punch pass or an admit pass, tens or twenties, you can do that directly at the Aquatic Center. Weekend hours this weekend, May 31st and June 1st is noon to 4:00, and then we close, Iowa City School District gets out the 6th. We open for the summer on June 7th. Weekend hours are 12 to 6:00, Saturdays and Sundays throughout the summer, and Monday through Friday, 11 to 7:00.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. And that is all.
All right, thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I really don't have anything, but I would motion we adjourn to executive session. I really don't have anything, but I would motion we adjourn to executive session.
Oh, okay. All right. You really, yeah. Okay, yeah. We got a motion and a second, all right. So, let's do it. We gotta vote? Okay, all in favor, say.
No, no, we gotta have a roll call for that.
Roll call for this one, all right, let's do the roll call. Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
Vogelzang?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
All right. Who seconded that one? Royce seconded it. Okay, we'll be back, folks.